Dave.
The recording has started.
Thank you. Just want to reiterate that the public can email Jennifer Carpenter at J Carpenter at FairfieldCP.org to make comments or also to make comments directly now, right Jackie? Were you doing that yet? That's right, to notify us in advance. Okay, so that was posted on the agenda last week. So I'll call the meeting to order, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the plan, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, for our nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three is minutes to consider an act upon the minutes of November 16, 2020. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it Nancy.
Thank you. Any discussion or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Number four, for information purposes only, resignations. Board of Education, Jennifer Leeper, Sherman Court, her term was expiring 2021. She was elected as state representative on November 3, 2020. Her resignation date was December 4, 2020. We'd like to, I'd like to thank Jennifer for her service to the Board of Education. I know how challenging it can be. I served on it for six years and so I appreciate her service and I look forward to her serving as state representative. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Nancy, your time.
Yes, thank you. I want to echo your sentiments, Madam First Select Woman. Jennifer has been a tireless advocate for the schools and through the Board of Education and her role on it, even before she had kids in the school system, which is really to be applauded. And I thank her so much and know she'll go on to do great things to support and serve Fairfield in her new capacity and very much look forward to working with her and wish her luck, but just really want to thank her for her service on the Board of Education. Big shoes to fill.
I'd like to echo that and thank Jen and I wish her the best of luck as the state representative and hope she represents Fairfield well and defends us against some of the goings on up in Hartford. So best of luck and thanks for the service on the Board of Ed.
Second resignation is Felicia Watson, whose term was going to expire on 11/23/2023. She resigned on November 20, 2020. This is a loss to the Conservation Commission. Felicia was a very good member and I'm very sorry to see her go, but I understand. And so I just want to thank her very much for her time and service to our community. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
I'd like to thank her as well for her service. Most appreciated, sorry to see her leave, but totally understand based on her resignation letter.
And also we'll echo that and just say thank you so much to Felicia and wish her all the best.
Thank you. Item number five, to hear and consider an act upon the following appointments. Carol Ann Burnsy, I believe she's on the WebEx, is Brookside Drive to replace Jennifer Leeper on the Board of Education till 11/21. 11/20/21, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to?
Yeah, so moved, so moved. I will move to appoint Carol Burnsy to the Board of Education.
Ms. Burnsy, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Hi.
Hi, oh there you are. Well, I would like to thank you for stepping up to serve our community on the Board of Education. Obviously, this is a challenging year coming up. It has been a challenging year and will continue to be. So thank you for your service and stepping up. And would you like to say anything, Carol?
I just wanted to echo Ms. LeFitz's earlier comment that these are indeed very big shoes to fill and I'm really grateful for your consideration. And after spending the past 10 years sort of quietly behind the scenes as an education advocate, I'm really honored to be here today. Thank you.
I'll open it up to the board for any comments or questions.
Yes, big shoes to fill Carol, but you are indeed the one for this moment to fill them. And particularly in these times, I'm so proud to support your candidacy and just think you are going to be a really thoughtful addition to the Board, mature, experienced, insightful, dedicated, passionate, all the things that we need on the Board of Ed. And I know you'll look out for the best interests of the town and the students and the schools and we're lucky to have you. So thank you for stepping up and I'm really proud to support your candidacy.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank you for stepping up out of the frying pan and into the fire. These are interesting times for all of us and the Board of Ed has really caught the brunt of it with this COVID situation. So we really look forward to your contributions in navigating through that as well as what I'm sure will be an interesting budget cycle and discussions with all going on in the world and with the Board of Education. So thank you. Best of luck to you in your term over the next 11 months or so and appreciate your stepping up.
Thank you.
If there's no further comments, I'm going to put it to a vote, all in favor. Can't hear you Nancy.
Sorry, I just wanted to add the comment that we did get some feedback and input and particularly recently from Jessica Gerber on the Board of Ed and I'd heard from several other members who are so happy now that we've all unanimously supported your candidacy. So I just wanted to make that known, that people had reached out.
Thank you.
Can you register your vote? I didn't hear you earlier.
Yes, in favor. Sorry, I thought I was unmuted.
Okay. Motion carries. Congratulations Carol and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much. Me too.
The next item is the Human Services Commission, the appointment of Mary Ellen Gavin, Sherwood Farm Road, term 11/20 to 11/24. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussions? Is, I think Mary Ellen is on the line. Mary Ellen, are you on?
Maybe not.
It's hard to tell some of the phone lines, but I just, well, I appreciate Mary Ellen stepping up. She does have a big reputation. I think she did a nice job on Human Services Commission. Does anyone else have any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say, go ahead Tom.
No, go right ahead please.
Thank you. I'd like to of course thank Mary Ellen for stepping in and also to thank Bernie Lynch, who I understand served for eight years, two full terms and for some of that was serving as the chairman on this commission. So thank you to him on his way out and Mary Ellen, good luck and thank you to you on your way in.
I'd also like to add my appreciation for you stepping up and for the long service of your predecessors. So thank you very much to you both.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck Mary Ellen, look forward to working with you. The next is the Shellfish Commission, appointment of the Shellfish Commission, Sean Cowan, Center Street, appointment from 11/20 to 11/20/25. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. I'll second it. Okay, Nancy makes the motion, Tom you second it.
Yep.
So I believe Sean is on the line. Sean, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line.
Hi Sean.
Hi.
I just want to thank you for stepping up to serve our community and I hear you have a wealth of knowledge. And I'd also like to thank Allison Savanna for her service. She's moving out of town, so she couldn't serve a second term. But Sean, I heard you're the right guy to fill the seat.
That's good to hear.
Is there any discussion from the Board?
I'll just say.
I'd just like to thank you. Go ahead Nancy, sorry.
Thanks. Yeah, same, same. Thank you Sean for stepping in and again, it looks like you will rise to the challenge and I thank you. And also to say to Allison, good luck with your move, having served what, six years I think. Vice Chair for part of it and I know you're integral, like making the Facebook page what it is and you did the clam clinic. So lots of good things and a good legacy. So thank you to Allison and thank you Sean.
I second that. Sean, thanks for joining such a controversial commission here. But best of luck to you in your service and thank you.
If you guys haven't already done so, Shellfish, Permits for the Whole Family is the perfect pandemic activity come 2021.
Well done, well done Sean.
Seeing no further discussion, do all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes unanimously, welcome aboard Sean.
Thank you.
The next item is Solid Waste and Recycling Commission. This one requires RTM approval. Can I have a motion to approve Michael Passwitz of Sigwin Drive, term 11/20 to 11/24? And I believe motion to approve first.
So moved.
Second.
I believe, Michael, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line, just on the phone over.
Well, welcome Michael and I just want to thank you for stepping up to serve. Charlie McDonald was a chair of the commission and he wasn't seeking a second term. He did a very good job on this commission and I appreciate you stepping up to serve our community very much and I'm just going to open up to discussion for it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, Michael, for stepping in where Charlie is leaving off and just thank you so much to both of you for your service and Michael for throwing your hat into the ring. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to thank you as well. Obviously, this commission has a lot coming before it, lots of changes in this area. So it's very important that we manage this closely. So I'd like to thank you for stepping up on the commission.
You're welcome.
And I'd also like to thank Charlie for his service and appreciate all the time and effort he put in.
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Welcome aboard Michael.
Thank you, grateful for the consideration.
Well, thank you. Item number B, Sustainable Task, Fairfield Task Force. We have two appointments, Dustin Madre, who's I believe on the line, and Joan Zimmerman, who I believe is also calling in or on the WebEx. Can I get a motion to approve? Aye.
So moved.
Second.
Dustin, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Hi Dustin, welcome.
Thank you.
Joan, are you on the line?
I am also, yes.
Hi Joan.
Hello.
Well, I just want to thank you both for stepping up. This is a very important task force and they do a lot of good work for our community. So I really want to tell you how much I appreciate you stepping up to do this work. And I'm going to open it up to the Board for any comment.
Just to Joan and Dustin, you're joining an amazing group of people who are doing such great work for the town and want to thank you for throwing your hat into the ring and it's just such important work. So grateful for your willingness to serve. Thank you.
Thank you so much for stepping up to both of you. I appreciate it very much.
Dustin or Joan, would you like to make any comments or say anything?
This is Joan. I would just like to say that both of us have been a part, witnesses to the group for probably the last six months to a year. And we've loved the camaraderie of the group and the action oriented leadership of the group. So I know I can speak for Dustin when I say that I'm really excited to be for real on the committee.
I second that. Absolutely, it's exciting and you know, an honor to be part of such a great and talented group of people and to help make Fairfield, you know, a greener place.
Thank you to you both again.
Well, if there's no further comments, I'll call it for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations to you both and thank you again.
Hey Madam First Select Woman, I'm getting some notifications that the sound in Fair TV is quite poor for this meeting, almost inaudible. I don't know if there's anything that can be done on that end or if we're aware, but I figured I'd pass along the commentary.
Yeah, we're aware of that and Jerry Spino's trying to fix it. I don't know if it's because, well, I don't know if it's because we're wearing masks, but he is looking into that.
Okay.
It's not just you, it's Nancy as well.
Oh, it's everybody I guess. So I guess it must be some technical thing that Jerry's trying to work on. Okay, the next item, number six. This is First Select Woman appointment only and this is for information purposes. The Conservation Commission, filling the vacant seat by Felicia Watson, is Nelson North, Barberry Road, term will expire 11/23. And Mr. North is on the line. Nelson? Maybe not. Okay, well, this isn't for a vote, but I just want to say that the chairman spoke very highly of Nelson being on the board and so I know that he will do a very good job for us on the Conservation Commission, which is an important commission in our town. And so I will move on to the next item. Item number seven.
Madam First Select Woman, just an item of housekeeping if I may, that I found, I just found out, I think it's worth noting. The, in the backup agenda materials, I just wanted to call people's attention to the bookmark, which is something I just learned about myself. But I know people who are following along, just something to point out that if you pull down the bookmark tab, and I'm sorry if I'm saying this to most people who know, but for those who don't, you can follow along and jump ahead in items rather than scroll through hundreds of pages. It'll take you to the item that's listed and thank you to Attorney Baldwin for pointing this out to me.
Thank you Nancy.
Thanks.
Item number seven is the Community Economic Development. Mark Barnhart is presenting. I'm going to ask for somebody to waive the reading of the item.
So moved, I will make a motion to waive the reading of the item.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mark, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you, members of the Board. As all of you know, the town does receive funding each year from the Department of Housing and Urban Development through its Community Development Block Grant Program. Earlier this year, the town received notice from HUD that it was receiving an additional $306,000 in supplemental funding to enable the town to prevent and respond to the coronavirus pandemic under the provisions of the CARE Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act. We recently received notice this fall that the town would receive an additional $297,452 as part of a second round of funding under the same CARES Act. The town, as a result of that notice, did publish a notice of funding availability and solicited applications from eligible recipients, which I have attached to the information provided to the Board. We do need to amend our existing program year 45 annual action plan to account for these dollars. They, like other funding provided under CDBG, do need to meet HUD requirements in terms of satisfying a national objective, be eligible for funding consideration. All the proposed activities that we're recommending for your approval as part of this amendment do meet those requirements and I would ask for your support so that this can be considered at the RTM later this month. Happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. I do have a couple of questions if I might.
Can I just step back for a minute? I don't think I did the, do I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead Tom.
Mark, how are you?
Good.
So for these items, when, have these been pre-approved? So in other words, if you, you know, dole out these funds to the appropriate parties as listed, there's no chance of us not getting this back through this program?
Once, once we've received notice that the funds are committed from HUD, they are authorized and were allowed to then appropriate those funds or use them for the intended purpose. So there is no likelihood that these monies would be rescinded by HUD.
So basically, so basically you tell them what they're going to use it for, you get the preapproval essentially before the funds are expended?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, they have to apply for a specific, I'm sorry, they have to apply for a specific purpose. We review that to ascertain whether or not it does meet HUD funding requirements and assuming that then, once we go through this process and submit it to HUD, HUD then reviews and approves it, we'll enter into a contract with the, with the agency and then they can expend the funds for that purpose.
What's the funds flow here? Do they come into the town and get dispersed through the town?
Typically, we do front the money and request reimbursement. There is a process which we can request funds upfront, but then we do need to account for any float and cover any interest costs. So it's just easier for us to do a periodic drawdowns of those dollars that are provided through HUD.
So either way, we're paying for the float, the interest cost on this?
Yeah, we put the money up and then we basically draw down the funds monthly as part of our reimbursement request.
Yeah, but there's, and there's no risk of us not getting reimbursement because as you've said.
There is no risk, yes. Yeah. Once we have a contract with HUD, then that is, that is in fact what we're, what we will receive.
And we don't, we don't disperse any funds until there's a contract in place, is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, well, if there's no further discussion or questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Flynn?
Aye, I said aye, I'm sorry.
Motion carries unanimously. Mark, I just want to thank you for doing the work on this. This is going to be very helpful to our nonprofits.
Well, thank you. Thank you, members of the Board.
Thanks, Mark.
Item number eight is the Chief Fiscal Officer to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into proposed contract with Bench Strength Partners Incorporated for services related to the negotiation of lease agreements for the use of the space of the town of Fairfield property for the placement of cellular antennas and related equipment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Our CFO, Derek Schmidt, is going to present this item. Derek, you want to go there? You're good there?
I think Jackie's going to turn. One second. Hi, everybody. So this, I just wanted to give you a little background on this item. For those of you who don't know, the town owns three properties where there are cell, cell towers on them. And on each cell tower, there are a number of different service providers, wireless service providers. And so when I came in, we started getting hit with emails and we have contracts with these wireless companies that pay rent on the, on the towers. So I was starting to get hit with emails from the companies saying that they want to upgrade their equipment, replace equipment on there and for that, they would pay us X amount of dollars more per month. I don't know the market, I don't know the cell tower leasing market that well, so I don't know if they're saying, we're going to give you $400 a month if that's good or not. So what I did is I went out and started investigating a little bit. I also, one of the, one of the biggest factors here and one of the biggest inputs was when I talked to my counterpart at Westport. And what he said was that they actually hired somebody, a consultant, to go in and negotiate with the wireless companies when they come through with these proposed amendments to their agreements to rent space on the towers. This company, the company in this, in this case is called Bench Strength Partners. And so what this agreement is, is to hire them to go out whenever we get this solicitation from one of the companies. I hand it over to him, to Bench Strength Partners. They go out, they negotiate the agreement, the change, the amendments to the agreements and negotiate the price and the terms of the agreement. There is no upfront cost in this arrangement. They get paid on a, on a basis of the amount of additional revenue that they achieve for us. So for example, if, if we're getting $100,000 from one wireless carrier on a, on a cell tower and they come in and negotiate a deal and get, get us $40,000 more over the year, they only get paid on that incremental amount, a percentage of that incremental amount and we get the rest. So it's, to me, this was a great solution for us because we don't have to spend the time negotiating deals and trying to navigate a market that is, you know, is complex and there are a lot of details to it, a lot of nuances to where things are placed, what the populations are around that, how high they are, all these different factors that BSP has and has a database for of all, all these different agreements around the, around the country. So they have a better sense of what's a, what's a good rate to get on a, on a particular agreement. So this is for us to enter into this arrangement and allow them to do that. I've been told by Westport that this particular group has achieved significantly more revenue and has doubled in revenue. And so I get, you know, that alone is a testament to the work that, that these guys can do for us. So looking forward to them doing the same thing for Fairfield.
Any questions?
So I have a few questions, yeah. But Nancy, if you do, you got it.
Can I just jump in? For those who are hearing, having trouble hearing on Fair TV, please. Um, for those who are hearing, uh, having trouble hearing on Bear TV, uh, please call to the listen-only line, and that number is six, six, seven, 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 six, nine, zero, four, four. I'll repeat it, is six, six, seven, 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 six, nine, zero, four, four. And that is the listen-only line. They apparently have some technical difficulties with Bear TV for people to be able to hear us. Okay, so Tom, go right ahead.
No problem. Nancy, did you have any questions before I get started?
No, go ahead, and I'll follow up if I have. Thank you.
All right. Did this, um, did this contract go through a regular RFP process?
Uh, it did not. I did, uh, I, I did some informal requests for information from a number of different companies, uh, and, and had in mind what the arrangement that we were looking for that was going to be the best deal for us, and we wanted a, uh, a company that was going to have skin in the game. So the idea of doing this on a contingency basis was important, and there wasn't a, uh, there wasn't going to be a cost related to this where it would rise to the level of, of needing an RFP.
But how do we know whether the, what we're going to pay them is, is market as compared to other companies if we didn't kind of level set? Even, even if it's not quote-unquote, it's, you know, what you're portraying is it's found money?
I, 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 I don't know anything for sure, but I did a significant amount of research, and I found about four or five other companies that do the same type of thing. These guys are the only ones that focus on municipalities. They're a municipal, uh, cell tower lease company, and so that was, uh, that was one of the reasons. They're also in the area, they're over the border, over the border in Harlem, New York. Um, and I know from looking at the other companies getting their references, uh, and, and, uh, you know, just getting a, a feel from their websites that, uh, that this was a much stronger company to go with in addition to the, the fact that we had the reference from the Town of Westport to go along with it. Uh, but the other companies were, uh, their references were definitely not on par with what, uh, what BSP was offering.
What do you mean their ref, how did you, where'd you get their references?
So I could give you an example. One of them, uh, one of them, I asked for references of, of companies that they've, uh, consulted for, and I wanted to know which, what municipalities they've done work for. And when he emailed me back, I just got a list of four attorneys, um, and so they, they hadn't, you know, I kind of got the sense that this was the case, but they hadn't done any work for municipalities in the past. Another one had, uh, very limited experience, uh, where they did, and this was down in, uh, the Myrtle Beach area, where they did something for Ner- North Myrtle Beach, but they hadn't done, uh, they hadn't done work on a contingency basis. They were doing, uh, they had, the town, North Myrtle Beach had different needs than we had. Uh, some towns just want to know, uh, get a sense of the market and, uh, do an overall analysis of whether or not maybe they have other properties where they could put cell towers, um, and, and so their, their needs were not the same as what we were looking for. I had a specific need in mind, which is that we're getting offers from these companies to, uh, to add equipment to existing cell towers and, uh, and to change existing equipment that's on the, on the towers. And BSP fit that profile, and the, the other companies were more, more generalist and more about, uh, consulting on, uh, cell tower leases in general and not on that topic.
So another question I have, it's, it's hard without knowing it to know whether this is a good deal or, or not a good deal, to be honest. Um, here's another question I have for you. So in your intro to this, you had said you were getting solicitations from cell tower companies that said they wanted to come back in or renegotiate their lease, and they were giving you upside. Why would we give a vendor upside that's already been offered to us? Why wouldn't we carve out the upside that the cell tower has already given us, uh, cell tower companies, and just give them the incremental upside to what's already been offered?
That's a good question. With, the arrangement with BSP is that they don't take a cut until they get to at least 20% of an increase, uh, in the amount that's being offered by the, by the wireless carrier. And in this case, the, the two contract, the two existing agreements and the amendments that were being proposed did not reach 20%. They were somewhere in the range of about 30%.
So they would get, so they would get nothing on the increases until they get 20% higher than what we currently have, and the solicitations that you've received to date have been less than 20% higher than what we currently have?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, in your intro, you had said that, um, they, they basically, they don't go out and solicit. Is that, is that right? Or why wouldn't we ask them to go out and solicit on our behalf?
That the, that the consultant wouldn't solicit?
Yeah, that's kind of what I, at least that's what I thought I heard there.
Uh, I don't, if I said that, that's not what I, that's not what I meant to say. I, I, and, uh, you know, what, so one of the things is that because these are contracts, we can't unilaterally, uh, you know, make, make changes to it, so there has to be an opening for us for, for the consultants to come in and do their work. And so in this case, the solicitation from the wireless company is the opening for us because they're looking to change the contract, and that's what allows us to do that. I guess, uh, I, I imagine, I didn't, I didn't broach this issue with them, but, um, we can use them for other things, and we could broach the topic of them going out and, uh, and soliciting for us.
Well, here, here's what my thought was. This is where I was, and, and maybe I'm just reading into it or don't understand, but I thought that if they weren't soliciting, let's say, one of the cell tower owners that is currently there or, or leasers, they come to us and say, we'll offer you, you know, 20%, and these guys go, oh, we would like it to be 30%, and that cell tower company says, okay, we'll do 30%. Does that, does our consultant not go out and say, let's market this thing, shop this thing because the lease is up, and maybe somebody else would give us 50%? In the description, it didn't sound like that's part of their service. Their service was if we get solicited, they try to get as much money as they can, basically market rate versus pushing one cell tower company against another to get not only market rate, but actually get a bidding contest between the companies to get a higher price.
I suspect there would be more cost in there, and there'd be less, uh, uh, known or expected revenue from that. Um, I, I, I don't think that would be a service that they would do on a contingency basis. We probably have to pay them upfront, and it, I don't know what that would yield for us. I'm, I'm not sure that that, that it would be worth it for us to take that risk of paying them money to do that kind of work and not knowing if the incremental amount between the, uh, what this consultant can get from the existing renter and going to getting into a bidding war with a number, another renter would be worth that upfront cost.
Right, but did you ask, I understand your point, it's a valid point, but did you ask the question?
I did not.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a disruption to, in, in adding this, uh, service? Is there a disruption to the community in any way that, would, would anyone notice if this was something we entered into or not? If I'm just kind of average citizen here?
The, do you mean of disruption in cell, cellular service?
Any of it. Disruption in cell service? Is there like, ultimately like construction, uh, either construction noise and detrius or costs or any other sort of unforeseen costs with entering an agreement?
Not that I'm a, from, entering an agreement, no, there's no, no disruption in service. There, there, I suspect could be some disruption as a result of them changing out equipment, um, for the, for the particular, uh, wireless carrier, uh, maybe for the amount of time that it takes them to change that out, and I'm, I'm not certain about what that amount of time is, uh, but that would happen regardless of who we went with, regardless of what company or if we did it, or if we went and did it on our own and didn't hire somebody.
Broadly.
And, and just long-term, I think the idea is that they would be putting in place more reliable equipment, uh, that's going to last longer and more up-to-date. You know, one of the options, uh, is that the company could come in and start putting 5G into place. So, so it would be better service in that sense.
And more just a, a comment, you had mentioned that there really isn't a competitor that offers the services of this company, which is just somewhat concerning because we're sort of trapped into a corner. If this is an engagement we want to take on, we don't really, it sounds like we don't have much of a choice.
Well, there, I, I think there are other companies. The question is those other companies don't just specialize in municipalities, they also deal with corporations and try to deal with, uh, space on, on their buildings and properties, so they represent more than municipalities. So at least that's my understanding. Is that correct, Jared?
That's what my investigation showed me, yes, that they're, uh, you know, like I said, we had a very specific need, and, you know, we, we are a, a specific type of entity, and, uh, BSP catered to us, catered to our needs.
Yeah. Here, here's what I would like on, oh, I'm sorry, Nancy, my apologies, could I cut you off?
No, that's okay. I mean, it, it feels still like there are a little few holes, but go ahead.
Yeah, that's, I, I would love to, um, get a couple of questions answered here and have this come back in two weeks at our next meeting, um, to support. I would love to get an answer to the question as regards, um, in a bidding situation, what does that look like? What does their service look like and what might it cost us? Uh, I would, I would love that. Secondly, I'd love a little more color over, um, who was spoken to and what types of services are offered out in the, in the, uh, field, especially since this didn't go through the normal RFP process. Um, I have been around long enough to remember when we did the cell towers in-house, and I just want that extra degree of comfort before I agree to, to giving away some of our profits here. That's all. And I, and Jared, I want to thank you, uh, for the good work done on this to date. I, I just want a little more information, I'll be ready to vote. That'd be my recommendation.
A, a couple of things. One is that each, each of these agreements that would be required, um, would obviously be, would be new agreements, and we can, we can reject any of the agreements that are, that's put forth by BSP. We don't have to accept any of them. And so if, you know, if we believe in any, in any of these given situations that it's more advantageous for us as administration, as a town, that we think it's better for, to pursue the avenue of, uh, of them trying to, uh, get other companies, other wireless companies involved and get into a bidding war, uh, you know, that's something that I believe we would have the option to do with these guys. And, and so here's the other thing, with, uh, with these, with the two agreements that I have right, right now before us, there, there are, uh, between four and five different wireless carriers already on these, on these towers, in different locations on the towers. So, and they're, they're, they're usually the big carriers, so I think the, the idea that there would be other carriers that would come in and want to battle for a position on there, I, I kind of doubt that that would happen.
That's fair. I want to confirm it. That's fair. And the thing is, I, I'm not going to have any, I'm never going to become a cell tower expert on this, so to your point, while I could, um, not agree to these agreements, um, if I didn't think they were, I'm not going to have the benefit of knowing, right? I'm not going to be any more educated than I am right now within that marketplace. And I just want to know that these guys are and that they're getting for us the best deal possible. And in fact, maybe it's not a new carrier, but maybe it's a carrier that wants to keep one of their competitors off of our tower, so they're willing to pay more. I don't know. Um, that, I just don't know enough to say that they're doing the right thing here.
Is there, um, other than our own time, to Mr. Flynn's point, if getting those answers and coming back in two weeks, does it change the terms or your ability to be effective in our, uh, execution of this?
Uh, we've been trying to act as quickly as we could on this, and it's taken a while to get together the information that I've gotten together so far, and, you know, time is money, and so we're trying to do this as quick as possible. I do-
So that, can you, sorry, spell that out, time is money, like really literally, two weeks delays something in the, in terms of money, but?
I, I'm just, I'm just saying that the sooner we can get this done, the better off we're going to be. That's all.
So my, if I could just, if I could just jump in, I, my understanding is that BSP leverages competitive pricing in their negotiations, um, and, and Jared spoke to Westport, they're using them, and they are seeing a windfall, uh, compared to what they had before, making your own. So they, this has been a real benefit to the Town of Westport, and they, they highly recommended, uh, using this. And that's why, because we've been contacted by so many cell carriers and all of this, um, that's why Jared did all this work and, uh, put all this time in to investigate it, and it just seemed like a real win to me when he came and spoke to me about it. I thought our town could really benefit, uh, financially to have this service, making those negotiations on our behalf.
And then, I hope, another question came up from, uh, select one from Flynn about the name, I do have names of companies, if that's what you want. I have some, the names of the companies that I reached out to. I can, you know, one of them was Steel and Eat, called Steel and Air, another one was Tower Leases, uh, Tower Genius, uh, there's another one called Gunnerson Consulting, that's the one in Myrtle Beach.
Right. No, I, I'd love to see those, and I, again, all I'm saying is, two weeks, talk to them about that one provision, provide those other companies' names, and I'll do my own little work on them, and we can go forward. That's it. I would doubt, when do your leases on your cell towers run out now?
They're, they're very long-term leases.
Right, so when, which ones are up soon?
Say that, they run between, uh, nine and 27 years, I believe.
No, I get it. What I'm saying is, um, do you have any cell tower leases that are expiring within the next two weeks?
No.
No.
This, this is Attorney Baldwin. This is Jim Baldwin. Can I, can I just chime in for a minute? Can you hear me?
Yes.
He's there for- I guess you can't chime in because I can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Jim. Can't hear you. Maybe he's having a technical issue.
Again, I'm asking for, we have a meeting in two weeks, right? Let's get the information due to due diligence because this doesn't go to any of the board, and then we can sign it.
I just want Attorney Baldwin to be able to say whatever he wanted to say, um-
I understand.
I don't know what the issue is.
Unless he's going to tell me that these leases expire in the next two weeks, I don't think it's a big deal.
Hold on, Tom.
I just want to echo that if, if waiting the two weeks satisfies just getting some of those questions confirmed and some of those answers confirmed, and it literally won't move the needle in terms of actual dollar spent or change of terms, then I, you know, that would have my support too, just so we can all feel solid in, in our approval of this. I know a lot of hard work has gone into that, and I totally appreciate how much this will benefit, uh, the town or how much it has the potential to benefit. The, the recommendation from our neighbors in Westport, that's great. I just think if two weeks is not going to move the needle and change things dramatically, then I'm in favor for, for that, Tom, so I just- that, Tom. So I just, you know, I, I don't argue that this will do great things, which is wonderful. But I think that if the three of us can all feel good about making that decision.
So Jim, can you hear us? Because I'm gonna move now because we have a lot on this agenda.
We do.
Yeah, I, I, I can hear you. You can hear me okay now?
Okay, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
We can. Thanks, Jim.
All right. Sorry about that. I, I for some reason had to call in on the uh, the, the landline here. But all I wanted to say was that these are for lease amendments that have been proposed to expand uh, the, the service and capacity on some of the cell towers. And uh, they have been pending now for several months. So in a sense, time is money because the sooner we enter into these lease amendments, the sooner we can start uh, seeing the additional revenue that would uh, result from it. The other thing is that I think that we have all the major cell uh, tower users already on our systems and, and the natural thing for these, for this company BSP to do is to leverage um, the other, their competitors' uh, potential use in those negotiations. That's exactly where their expertise comes in, is to leverage uh, competitors' pricing in those discussions and why we would rely upon them for that purpose. Because I'm certainly not skilled in it when negotiating these things and I don't think anybody else in town is. So um, the, the proposal as to whether or not Mr. Flynn, they can come in and, 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 and seek competitors, I think is, is unlikely. And it also um, kind of ignores the fact that the competitors are, are already there. And, and that's the very thing that they'll be leveraging is that pricing from their competitors. So I'm not sure if.
Jim, I appreciate that. Thank you. So give me a list of the ones we already do business with on the individual sites and show me that and we'll vote on this in two weeks.
I can give you that right now if you want.
No, I want to be able to look at it, actually.
What, what, what is, so what is it that you want to see exactly?
The list of the cell tower.
I think Jared, I think, Tom, I think Jared should read the list and let, let's just listen.
So.
Hey, you can read the list. I want to see it right.
One of the lists is uh, the cell tower lease at thirty-nine sixty-five Power Street. It's the uh, wireless carriers that are on there are OmniPoint, T-Mobile, Sprint Spectrum, AT&amp;T, New Singular Wireless and Verizon. The other one is a hundred Reef Road and that's OmniPoint, T-Mobile, Sprint Spectrum, AT&amp;T, New Singular, and that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So uh, Mr. Flynn, um, you need to see those names in writing?
Yeah, I'd like to see it. I, basically I'm asking for, what I'm saying is I would vote on this in two weeks. I want, I would like the information that I requested. That's it. I'm not saying it's a bad deal.
No, it's okay. So I, I personally am ready to vote on this, but if you guys want, if someone really wants to make a motion to delay uh, for two weeks, feel free to go ahead and do that.
Okay. I'd make a motion if we, what's our next meeting? Is it the twenty-first?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd make a motion if we move this to the twenty, to their meeting on the twenty-first, uh, pending the few questions and bits of information that I request and then I'll be ready to vote for it. So my motion is to move this, or table this uh, till the meeting on the twenty-first.
Matt, Matt, Mr. Flynn, uh, Attorney Baldwin again. I believe that the plan is to have a special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on the fourteenth.
Okay. I, how about if I say, thank you, Jim. Then how about if I say the, the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen? Um, then my motion to say to the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I appreciate that input. And I, it requires a second.
Yeah, and I'll second that motion. And um, you know, I support my colleague, Mr. Flynn, in his uh, seeking out some information so he can make a more informed, comfortable decision. So I second the motion. Especially, aye.
Aye.
Uh, no. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is uh, tax assessor Ross Murray and Mike Fazio from Municipal Valuation Services will present uh, a summary presentation on our uh, property tax revaluation system. And I'm gonna hand it over uh, to Ross, who's in the room with me, and Mike Fazio, who has called in on Web Apps. I don't know who wants to start. Uh, pick it off, Ross.
I'll pick it off. And then we also have Chris Taren from um.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Chris. I, I didn't see you. Hi, Chris.
Okay. So we um, we have sent the notices to the firm and they should be uh, arriving in mailboxes this week. So just to recap a little bit, revaluations are mandated by the state, by state statutes to be done every five years. Um, we have to inspect properties once every ten years and that's commonly referred to as a full revaluation. The last revaluation in twenty fifteen was a full for us. And so this was just um, uh, it's called an update sometimes, but it's still statistically done the same way. The purpose of the revaluation is to equalize values amongst all properties. Uh, again, the, the revaluation was performed by Municipal Valuation Services and they are a thorough-based company. Uh, some of the highlights of uh, changes, I spent a lot of time on, with GIS and working with um, Joanna Harrison, correcting some neighborhood issues. We had properties that were just, just coda wrong and they were, you know, completely in the wrong neighborhood. So we fixed a lot of that. And then Mike went through and reviewed the boundaries and we changed four neighborhoods. We carved out four new neighborhoods from the existing group. We also went through and added docks, which had not been captured in the past. We added uh, billboards and we also added uh, coding for affordable parcels. So we could uh, keep track of our affordable houses. The following slide, page four, is um, a map of those four new parcels, our four new neighborhoods that were created. So you can see that up in the north, we had a new neighborhood number one that came out of um, one A, which is far north, up towards eastern. And parcel two, which is uh, Strathfield, came out of two A. And number three, which is by the university, came out of three A, which was further west. And finally, uh, four, came out of four A, which is in the Pine Creek area. The method to do a revaluation is that we uh, we analyze all the sales between October first nineteen and October first twenty twenty. The sales are reviewed to make sure they are valid and usable. They have to be an arms-length transaction. We have a total of nine hundred and seventy-eight sales, eight hundred and forty-seven residential, a hundred and twenty-two condominiums, and nine commercial properties. For commercial properties, we also analyze income and expense data that we gather in the office. And um, Chris does the commercial properties also with data from MLS, Postar, PWC, Investor Services. We then develop a pricing model. Residential is based on the sales and commercial is based on the income and expense that the property can potentially generate. Then we take those values, the model that's developed from that data, and we apply it to all, all the properties, all the unsold properties. And the way we validate that is we look at uh, a few key ratios, uh, statistics. We have a sales ratio and the standard is between, is to be between ninety-two and a hundred and seven percent. And we have two statistics that we looked at that are measures of uniformity. Uh, coefficient of dispersion and a price-related differential. The COD should be fifteen percent residential, twenty percent commercial, and the PRD should be ninety-eight to a hundred and four. And finally, there's an unsold ratio that looks at the unsold properties and that should be ninety-five to one oh one. So our results on those ratios, our sales ratio for residential was ninety-seven point five four, the COD was eight thirty-three, and the PRD was one oh one. So they're all well within the statistical standards set by the state. Condominiums, ninety-five twenty-nine, COD was five point four, and the PRD was one point zero zero three. And commercials was um, sales ratio was ninety-nine point five, COD was two point one seven, and the PRD is not usable because we did not have a sufficient number of sales. And the unsold property ratio is ninety-seven seven. So we have met the uh, the state standards when we finalize the grand list and certify it. Uh, the state will review those numbers and uh, should have no trouble approving it. So on the commercial side, we saw an increase of twenty-seven, just over twenty-seven percent. And that was led primarily by apartments. And there were four uh, new construction projects that um, were the major component of that. We also saw an increase in car dealership and service centers. There were some activities on Commerce Drive and professional level buildings. Decreases were primarily in nursing homes. On the residential side, I gave you some charts um, on the following pages. We have a sales volume, the average sales price by neighborhood, percent change by neighborhood, and a map showing the percent changes. So on slide ten, the number of sales by month through the study period, you can see that the volume was rising throughout the summer. And as you'll see on the slide eleven, this is um, a rather different trend than you would typically see. Uh, I think slide eleven really tells the story of what happened this summer with, with COVID. We had a little bit of a typical rainstorm, which is probably the result of the sales that would have happened uh, around March and April when COVID first um, spread. But then you can see uh, once we hit July and August, it just, the, the volume was tremendous compared to prior, the prior year. Uh, the following slide is average sales price by neighborhood. Uh, that is pretty much, has not changed from prior ones. I shared for the slide into that. Sasko continues to be the highest value of neighborhood and Kings Highway, Tonsil area is the most affordable. I have a sales price quartile slide. So the median value right now is at just about six hundred and fifty thousand, with the lower values uh, median being four hundred and twenty-one thousand, two fifty, and the higher value properties are almost one point two. So you can see that we're spread out around the high end of values than we do on the lower end. Page fourteen is just a listing of each neighborhood and its percent increase with the um, decreasing neighborhoods on top and the neighborhoods increasing on the bottom. And if you um, the map is, I think, a little more easy to follow and that's on page fifteen. So you can see Greenfield Hill, Ridge, the Ridge area, Southport and uh, Sasko Hill all had decreases in value.
So. The Strathfield area. Can we stop on page fourteen? Can we stop on page fourteen for a second?
Sure.
All right. Okay to ask questions? Yes, no?
Yes.
All right, thanks. So um, the first question that I had that I couldn't find in the packages, and I understand this is preliminary, preliminarily, what's happened to the grand list in total?
Well, it's what, it's the real estate portion of the grand list.
Yeah. So for the real estate portion of the grand list, has it gone higher, lower, or what in total?
Uh, it is up, I think it's seven and a half percent.
You're correct. Okay, so it's up seven and a half percent. So, and what percentage is commercial real estate now of the grand list, of this portion of the grand list versus what it was? Do we know that number?
I don't have that here, but I could get that and pass it back along.
That'd be great. Um, here's, here's, when I look at page fourteen, here's the context. Number one, it's great that in these economic times, we have a growing grand list, particularly since, and I, I should say this was before COVID, a lot of the surrounding towns and communities did not have that. Um, they, they had quite a challenge in the grand list. So it's good that we do. Number two, it's also very good that commercial real estate um, has grown by that percentage because that'll help take some of the burden off the residential taxpayers, um, which have an exorbitant amount of burden, as I recall. And the third item though, is when I look at page fourteen, um, we've had a lot of, and, and in a vast generalization, we've had a lot of the neighborhoods that have higher-priced homes have seen dramatic dips in their values. Um, and a lot of the more moderate-priced uh, areas of town have seen increases, some significant, uh, some not, but still increases. Um, so what you're really gonna have is a redistribution of the real estate taxes in town, uh, particularly on the residential side, between the higher uh, priced homes uh, into the more moderate price. So you, in certain neighborhoods, you're gonna see a significant impact to your um, tax bill. Is that a fair statement?
Tom, you cut off, you cut off just on the end there. I'm sorry.
Is that fair? What I was basically saying is you've got a, you've got an income tax, or sorry, property tax redistribution here from a lot of the more expensive homes um, to the more moderate-priced homes in town. And in certain areas, you're gonna see, potentially see a significant increase in your taxes, having nothing to do with any spending increase or just essentially your piece of the pie has grown um, compared to other areas that were causing more, or carrying more of the tax burden previously. Is that a fair statement?
Uh, in, in general, yes. But you know, that's, we need to see what the whole grand list does and what the budget does to determine what that increase will be. Because just because, just because you have eight percent increase in a neighborhood on the sheet doesn't mean that their taxes will go up eight percent.
I understand. And that's, and I completely understand that, but it's not true that we need to see, in fact, I completely want to segregate out this for purposes of the discussion. If we were to keep the budget exactly the same year over year, there are areas of town whose tax bill would change in some instances significantly, uh, both higher and lower, based on a redistribution of the tax burden based on the revaluation, having nothing to do with whatever decisions we make on the budget. Is that a fair statement?
And that, and that is the, that is the purpose of a revaluation.
Yep, exactly. So there's gonna be areas of town that are gonna get significant increases and I, and I'm not defining significant because to your point, that's unknown right now. Um, and you keep, and you keep on speaking about the grand list, with my understanding, this is the real estate portion. You've got the property portion or the mostly vehicles and things of that sort, which is a much smaller portion of the grand list. Fair to say?
Oh, it is. The personal property and the cars are a smaller portion. Absolutely.
Right. So that's kind of the communication that people need to understand is that there's areas that if you're in the beach area here, um, it looks like your tax burden's gonna go up. Whereas if you're in Sasko Hill, it looks like you get a significant adjustment, right?
Yep. And they have been overdone over the past couple of years. We have seen those prices drop and they're, you know, over that period of time, they've been paying more than their share and vice versa on some, on the areas that have gone up.
Right. So the beach area, is that by virtue of the fact that a lot of the renov- a lot of the renovations and construction in that area has raised the overall value of those neighborhoods? Is that kind of what's happened in that area?
It, it's that and it's the desirability. I mean, we're seeing those, um, Mike and, Mike is very familiar with this, with the beach area. Um, but you know, we're seeing sales that, that dictate the, the change in value. So you want to comment on the beach area?
So, Tom, can we let, maybe Mike can talk a little bit about the, uh, analysis. I was, um, I had two very long presentations with Ross and Mike Fazio on their methodology and analysis. And I think Mike, uh, can speak a little bit more, uh, clearly about the, the work that they did and sort of let him get through it and then, uh, might be helpful to ask questions to be in because I thought it was very informative, uh, everything that Mike shared with me and how they, how he did it.
Yeah, no, I understand it. And first of all, I, I want to say I'm not questioning. I want to be very clear. First of all, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work and thought that went into it. Thank you for your work on the valuation and it's great that we've used a local company. So I'm in no way questioning kind of the results. I'm just interpreting the results and spitting back what I see in the various communities within the town, what the impact is going to be tax rate. So I'm not questioning what's being said. I, I'm interpreting what the impact is going to be around town. That's it.
Right, Mike, if you could, because I know a lot, a lot of our residents are, are calling in to listen and I think it might be helpful for them to hear about the process. I mean, obviously we are, uh, statutorily obligated to do a revaluation every five years by the state of Connecticut. And, uh, the whole board of selectmen voted, uh, the company, uh, Mike Fazio's company to do this revaluation. He did it, um, and did it in the timeframe that they're supposed to do it. So I think it'd be helpful for residents who are listening to be able to hear a little bit more about the process. So Mike, if you would, uh, jump in?
Sure, so when it comes to the increases on, you're saying these neighborhoods, when, I'm getting, uh, bad, uh, reverberation. But when you're saying that some neighborhoods are looking at tremendous increases in their tax, um, it's only neighborhoods, if, if everything's kept the same, if the grand list is going up seven percent, you're really only looking at the neighborhoods that are over seven percent on the chart that would see any increase, the rest would see decreases. Um, and then you have to look at the real estate market as a whole. The hottest markets in Fairfield right now is the under six hundred thousand dollar range and the beach area. Uh, those properties are the properties that are the most sought after and move the quickest. And what we did, starting with the beach area, is we really redid the entire beach area. And what I looked at is I looked at the beach area as, okay, the waterfront, which these are the properties right on Fairfield Beach Road that are on the sound, the waterfront. And I divided the beach into three separate areas. Uh, I broke it down into three areas of the beach area on the waterfront. Then what I did is if you were across the street from the beach, uh, on like Roland and Lally and Smith and all those streets in there, what I did is I created three separate, more sub neighborhood. So if you're in the first block of the beach, from the beach, your values, and we're talking about land values right now, your land values were set differently if you were two blocks away and they were set differently if you were three blocks away. With all prior evaluations, all these num, all these values were the same. So if you were three blocks away or one block away from the beach, you had the same exact value on your land. I divided it all out, so the further you move away from the beach, the, the, uh, per block, your land values decreased incrementally. Then the other thing we took a look at are houses that are raised versus non-raised or FEMA compliant versus non-FEMA compliant. We found that, uh, premiums were being paid for properties that were FEMA compliant versus non-FEMA compliant. So we did an exercise and Ross helped tremendously in this of trying to, uh, find all the FEMA compliant houses. We put the, if they were in a flood zone or not in a flood zone. And at that point, we put a, uh, factor on those properties that were FEMA compliant versus non-FEMA compliant. The second thing we looked at were houses that were built in the last seven, eight years that were raised. We created another category for these homes. Um, and we analyzed each one of them and re-graded those houses and we put it, because there was a lot of, some were called colonials, some were called conventional, some were called estates. There was no uniformity. So we created uniformity amongst all the houses that were built down in the beach area uh, in the last seven years. So we really took the beach area and dissected it and came up with some numbers that I feel are, uh, are pretty good. Uh, we were tracking them versus, again, sales that are properties that are currently listed, that have closed. We're looking at properties that are closing even after the revale date to make sure the model was working correctly and everything seems to be pretty spot on. Um, the other areas of town with Kings Highway and Tungus Hill, those, those are the areas that have the homes that are less than six hundred thousand dollars. Those homes, and that real estate market is really hot at this time. Um, houses are coming on the market, they're not staying on very long, there's multiple offers. Um, I spoke into a ton of realtors in town. They're all saying, telling me the same thing, that the, the market under six hundred thousand is a very vibrant, strong market. And I see, think that's why you saw, you're seeing increases in those neighborhoods that are, uh, a little bit more than last time. Uh, last time, that market wasn't as hot as it is this time. The Sasko Hill market, if, when I were talking on the other end of the spectrum, Sasko Hill, uh, historically was, uh, overpriced. Uh, we brought that back into line. Waiting till Greenfield Hill, Lower Greenfield Hill, The Ridge, Paul's Farm, those are all looking at decreases. And that's the, the Greenfield Hill, even though it's coming back a little bit now, it really got decimated, uh, after two thousand and fifteen. The real estate market up there, really, the bottom fell out. Um, and it's only in the last year since, uh, COVID that you're seeing a resurgence and people are looking back at the, the, uh, the, uh, upper portion of the town. And we're seeing, uh, some of that market come back. At one point, uh, we were looking at prices down over twenty percent and you could see that it's come back pretty healthily. Uh, so if you have any, any specific more questions, I could, uh, answer those on the residential.
Thank you. It's very thorough.
So I don't have any questions, but based on, and thank you for the thorough analysis again. My commentary would be on the schedule on page fourteen then. If I look at the bottom of the schedule, anybody above seven percent, and that's very helpful, um, South Pine Creek, east of North Benson, Pine Creek, Sherman, Kings Highway, Tungus Hill, Reef Road and Fairfield Beach. All other things being equal, they would all see an increase based on, um, just based on redistribution. Where the ones at the top of the chart would see somewhat significant decreases, um, and that's where the word significant comes into play, um, due to the growth in the grand list largely and the redistribution, the difference in valuation. That, I'm just trying to make sure I'm reading it correctly.
You're correct.
That, that's correct. It should be correct. I should, I'll say it now. That, that's a correct. Once we get, you know, things, um, finalized, the grand list, the budget, it's going to move a little bit, but in general, yes.
Yeah, and again, guys, I want to be very clear. I'm, leave the budget out of that conversation. The budget is a completely separate. This is about distribution. The budget is about spending. And there's really, that's, having been on the Board of Finance when the last one, the last several have taken place, this always becomes a hot topic of conversation. And it's very, you know, it's, it's very important for the education of the public to be able to split the tip and say, what is it that impacts the taxes? That's a, the change in your piece of the pie versus what is it that impacts your cha, taxes, which is really based on governance and budgeting?
Okay. I would like to go back. Um, I was able to come up with the percentages on commercial.
Thank you.
Last year, it was nine point seven one percent for commercial and industrial and currently it's at eleven point seven seven, so about a two percent increase on the commercial side.
That's great. That's great news. So that's, so we've gone from ninety one, ninety one percent being based on the, the residential property to about eighty nine percent of the total uh, being based on, um, as it relates to real estate taxes, being based on residential.
And we've had some, we've had some significant projects over the last couple of years that contribute, a couple that are on.
Sure we have. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Thank you for the thorough analysis. And again, I appreciate you stepping us through a couple of times, um, how this was calculated as well.
Um, yeah, page fifteen, uh, is a map that just, uh, shows it graphically, uh, where the increases are and the decreases. So light blue is a, is a decrease to a dark blue is greater decrease. And, uh, on the other side, the light green to dark green shows, um, increase in values. So notices were, um, we sent them to the printer last week. It should hit mailboxes this week.
Yeah, they were dropped today in, uh, at the mail, at the post office. So the mailhouse dropped them today at the post office, so within a day or two.
Thanks, Mike. Um, the notice will give the, the prior grand list assessment and the new assessed value. So we need to pay attention. It's an assessed value, which is seventy percent of the market value. And we have to put this S value on the notice by statute. The letter will tell you how to, um, ask for an informal hearing with, um, just evaluations. And it's a great opportunity if you have questions or you don't feel your assessment's correct. Um, it, it can be corrected now without going to the more formal process, which I'll just start in a sec. Uh, the letter will also talk about how to appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals, which is the more formal.
Right.
So if you have questions, again, reach, uh, first thing you should always do is look at your field card on, on B T S I dot com. That information was updated today, so it is, it is current with the new figures. Uh, you know, if, if you have something you feel is an error on that card, uh, reach out to us because that is, uh, you know, one of the easier things to fix before the grand list is wrapped up in, under January. Take advantage of the informal hearings. Um, be prepared. Look for similar comps. That's the best way to, um, appeal your house is to find three or four example, similar sold properties. And keep it simple. Um, three or four comps and, um, that should be all you need. And the comps can be searched out on B T S I dot com and that link is, uh, also on our website.
And Ross, if I could add to that, when, when you're looking for comps, they have to be sales. Don't look for comps of your house with an assessment versus another house with an assessment. It has to be a similar style house that's sold.
Absolutely. Uh, if you're not satisfied, if you're not satisfied after the informal hearing, then your next opportunity would be to go to the Board of Assessment Appeals. Um, the forms to apply to the Board of Assessment Appeals will be available in late January, the beginning of February, once the grand list is signed. And the time is short to get to the V A A. That the deadline to get there is February nineteenth. So the, the appeal application has to be in my office received by February nineteenth. And that is a, a statutory deadline. Once you, um, apply to the V A A, the, um, appeals, the hearings will be in March. You'll receive a notice. And, um, after that, if you're still not satisfied, you would need to go to Superior Court. But we hope you don't get there.
And I just want to jump in and say that we've been, um, I've been putting, uh, information about this in the newsletter and we will also, I will also make sure to include the process and then any links we have on the forms as they become available to make sure our community is very aware of this and has that information.
Very good. Any questions?
Um, Ross and, uh, Mike, is there anything that you think, uh, for any of our residents who are listening now, um, that you didn't talk about or mention that you think would be helpful? Uh, just as informational or, or anything at all that you think residents might want to know that you might not have mentioned?
Well, I'll talk a little bit about the formal meetings. Uh, if you choose to have an informal meeting with our company, you'll make an appointment either online. If you don't have access to a computer, you could call the number that is on the, uh, notice that you'll be receiving. Um, when you make the appointment, make sure that you have all your information, uh, ready to go. We're going to be doing phone hearings due to COVID. There won't be in person at this time. Um, we do have the ability to do a Zoom if somebody needs to show us something. But the best way, and it outlines it on the notice, is to get all your information, either fax it to us or you could, there is an email address. You could PDF all your information ahead of time. So we're looking at the same information that you're looking at when you call in for your phone hearing. Uh, the phone hearings, there'll be, uh, weekday, weeknight and weekend times available. Uh, if you don't find anything that works for you or if you have some special type of needs, call the office and we'll accommodate you.
Thank you. You guys there? Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, here. So, um, I just want to, uh, say that I know that people are on edge about this. Um, obviously, uh, having to meet the five year statutory requirement, uh, in the middle of, uh, pandemic is not an, an optimum situation, um, and not one that any of us wishes we had to do right now. Um, even though some, some residents in our community will see their, uh, that their revaluation go down, uh, it's, it's going to be difficult for our residents who are going up. Um, so I, I will include, again, I will reiterate that I will include the information as I get, it becomes available so that our residents can have it. How to, they'll have that information they receive from Mr. Fazio's company on that card, how to schedule an appointment and then we will send out additional information about how to appeal and so on and so forth. So I thank you both for, uh, taking the time to share it out with the Board of Selectmen and also with our residents.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, um, our next item, um, is, uh, uh, is, uh, item number ten. Uh, the first select woman, superintendent of schools in our town attorney, are to hear and consider a request from first select woman in the Board of Education for a special appropriation in the amount of five million, one hundred and eight, two thirty three to purchase approximately eleven point seven four acres of land and existing buildings located at three oh nine Barberry Road from the American Institute of Neurodevelopment Incorporated, AKA Giant Steps. Um, this is, um, just a, you know, um, informational. Uh, I, I put on this information only if it's special purposes. We, uh, will be coming back on the fourteenth. So I'm going to just kick this off before I start. Ross, you're, uh, you're free. It's up to you. So, uh, on the line is attorney. So on the line is Attorney Baldwin, Mike Cummings, St. Angeles Papa George, as well as our Chairwoman of the Board of Education and Christine Vitale and Mr. Mancuso, who is in charge of the alternative high school curriculum and program. So I just want to just give a little bit of history. I know you probably both already know it. And the town residents, for the purposes of the residents, the Board of Education and Superintendent reached out to me, well, months now ago, talking about how they were kind of hitting a bit of a snag with the current location where the alternative high school is located now in St. Emory's in the diocese building. And the fact that they were looking to purchase that property and that it was hitting some problems. It was expensive. There was problems with renovating the, the building. There was a lot of expense there, obviously not a great property, begin with not a lot of parking and, and the expense associated with renovating or fixing that building. Excuse me, guys. Sorry. So then they, they identified this location and we went to, they invited, they invited myself and some members of the RTM, some members of the Board of Finance to go and view the property just to get a sense of it and so we could see it. At the time, the, the price was much higher than what we're looking at now, the price that was being floated. And honestly, I, I was a little put back by the original cost that was being floated and wasn't exactly on board. And then they came back sometime later and the price was starting to adjust down. So it became much more attractive. What I noticed at, when I went on the tour of the property is the, the size of the property. It was a big piece of property in, in Southport. And so most notably touring the building, it showed me that it was basically a turnkey operation. The building was currently being used for a school. It had a lot of the amenities that we need to provide a school experience for our students in the alternative high school. It had a kitchen, it had bathrooms, classrooms, gymnasium, fairly new, newer boilers and things of that nature. So it was very attractive looking at that. It does have an outbuilding on it that is in not very good shape. And that was of concern when we viewed it that day. And so I thought about, you know, our town purchasing this, you know, we could potentially, and that's why the town, just to reiterate, the town, I wanted the town to lead this and, and give the prop, the school to the Board of Ed to use for this program, but that we would take ownership of the land and be able to use it in a way that I believe, that our town bodies would come to agreement on, on several items. Now, there are things I don't know yet, similar to John Sullivan, when he purchased the property at Burst Street many, many years ago, you know, he said someday I want, maybe we will use this for a school. And that it sat dormant for many, many years. So there, there could be, I, there could be ideas of things that the community could rally around. But we need more information to move forward and obviously buying from the town boards. But that building, I mean, potentially, I want to get more costs after we, we move this forward and, and it passes. You know, need to kind of look at what the cost would be to demolish it. What would be the cost to fix the roof and make it airtight, potentially use for storage or some other use? But those are items, things I'd rather, I'd like to research a bit more and then bring before the town bodies. Because I think we need to kind of look at the whole picture overall over time. And I don't think we're in a hurry to do anything of that nature. I think what we are primarily looking at are two things. We needed a space for our alternative program. You know, actually, this is kind of something near dear to my heart. When I was on the Board of Education, there was a sense before I had gotten on there that the alternative high school program wasn't one that needed a whole lot of attention. And I always felt that that was sort of wrong heading, that, that they are our students and they deserve to be treated as any other student that goes to school in our town and should be getting the same amenities and same consideration. So to me, it's very exciting to have a permanent location for that school because they've been moved around so many times over the last twenty years. I think it would be really ideal. And again, the second, I think, priority is that this is almost twelve acres in the middle of Southport. And I don't think anybody in this town isn't aware that we are under sort of siege with eight dash thirty D developments and most notably, Southport has been considered for quite a few. And if, 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 I mean, I can't imagine that this property would sit empty if the town didn't purchase it. So that was the second priority. And I'm going to hand it over to, I don't know who wants to go first, maybe Mike and Angeles. Then Attorney Baldwin can ask any questions about the contract. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Secretary General. Thank you, Ms. Kuckler, for the introduction and thank you for your support. Yes, I would just echo what the first select woman said. The Board of Education of Fairfield Public Schools has been in search of a permanent site for the Walter Fitzgerald campus, our alt ed program. The current site, St. Emory's, has done its job, but as many of those of you who toured it over the past year have seen, it presents a number of difficulties moving forward. One is even the viability of, the ability of us, the Fairfield Public Schools to purchase or acquire the property from the diocese, from nearest diocese. But in addition to that, it is the long-term needs of that facility to repair and restore it to a condition that would be worthy of the students and staff that attend there. We had estimates and Mr. Papa George can get into details if, if that's so requested, of what that would cost to, to, to bring that property back to, back to ready use for students and staff. But it, it presented a number of challenges as well. You know, just its location, it's right on the hill, the water infiltration. There are a number of issues as well as concerns with what might happen or what we might find when we began to open up the walls. When the Giant Steps property became available to us, it really does present itself as a move-in ready option for us. It, it relatively very well matches the current size and expected long-term size of the Walter Fitzgerald campus. It also offers us a number of opportunities to perhaps think about some pilot programs that we've been thinking about in district. And I've, I've mentioned to people who took the tour that one of the things that we're interested in Mr. Mancusi's pursuing is the creation of a pilot reading program for early elementary students. So we see this as the right thing to do for the students and we also see it as ultimately a cost savings for the, the district and for the town.
I have a couple of questions or comments, but if Mr. Anzus or Christine, I didn't know if anyone else. Can I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead, Nancy. Angeles, you don't have anything that you want to add?
No, I think they've summed it up. If you have specific questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
I think I have a couple, but I do want to just say broadly, philosophically, I think it's such an incredible, just broadly, Walter Fitzgerald as a, as a school is such an incredible opportunity, not only for our town, but you know, there aren't many schools in the region that are like this. And so that we have an opportunity to bring kids from other districts as not just a revenue generator, but to offer that service is like ethically a great thing. And again, philosophically, and that we can provide the service and that the fact that it may make us some money is wonderful. The difference between the school that is currently existing versus this new property, it's, it's kind of night and day. It's obviously bittersweet. The school that was there served the community in such an incredible way. And it's a bit of a heartbreaker that circumstances dictated. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we may benefit from some loss that will be felt, but, and has been felt by the community, but we have an opportunity to, to give back in such a great way. So this a hundred percent has my support. And I'm, I'm just really thankful and Mr. Mancusi, with your relationship and the fact that you were able to foster this and just the whole team, it's wonderful. But I do have a couple of questions because I think that we should make sure to have the careful analysis the way we would for anything. And curious about the carrying costs of that empty building? Like if we keep it, we don't know. We know that it's not zoned right now for residential. I think that's my understanding. So like affordable housing that may not actually be something that would be a problem potentially or a concern or a consideration. But what are the carrying costs? And then what are the operation, the operating costs at this place versus the current spot? And again, not that these are for me roadblocks. It's more just so we can be more informed about this investment, which I think is a wise one. And then in terms of immediate costs of fixing, because that building will be empty, like what kinds of security things will be put into place? Are there things that we'll have to spend right away just to make it for that, the building that is not in use? So I guess it's three questions.
Hi, this is Attorney Baldwin. I can answer the question about zoning. It is zoned in double A as a residential zoning, so.
Okay. No, it's interesting to know. Yeah, yeah.
And I also want to add that tomorrow night, the TPZ is going to address this potential purchase pursuant to statute eight dash twenty-four. And they'll dive much more deeply into what could be built there if not, you know, a place for the alternative high school, et cetera. So if people are interested in those kind of zoning questions, I, I would encourage them to listen into that meeting tomorrow night.
And I want to echo what our first select woman said. I mean, the potential for it, eleven acres in the middle of Southport is just incredible. And now that the price tag is a little lower. So I, I wasn't arguing the, the use of it. I was just more saying, I think we have an opportunity to be creative. So I guess my, my biggest questions are carrying costs of the empty building. What are immediate costs of having to kind of protect it or wall it off or do anything so that it is separate from the, the high school campus? If that's something that needs to happen? I understand that there was a, a secure, like a small security issue there. Is that something we need to think about? And then the difference in the, two more questions. The difference in the operating costs, the, the carrying costs and the operating costs between the current campus and this new one? And then from that, I guess we could analyze cost savings, but, and is there an opportunity to charge more out of district? Sorry, it's a lot.
No, that's okay. And I'm going to ask Mr. Papa George to respond to the majority of those questions. But let me start with the last one first. We do believe that, that there is an opportunity for out of district students to attend an alternate camp, an alternative, alternative education campus in the high school. Not every neighboring town has one. We do know that there have been opportunities in the past for students from other districts to attend and that the, the facilities of St. Emory's have been, has not been conducive to even getting people into the building and take a look at it. So Giant Steps is a far more attractive property in both inside and outside the building. And we believe that there's opportunity there to increase out of district. So Mr. Papa George, you can address some of the questions that Ms. Lefkowitz.
Sure. I, I believe one of the first questions was the, the carrying cost of the, what we refer to as the building two, abandoned building. And then the difference with the carrying costs of the new Walter Fitzgerald site versus the old one. So we've just received, shouldn't say just received, we just received utility bills for the last two years from the Giant Steps organization. And we're pulling together those, the utilities for electric, gas and water. And we're pulling them together with a spreadsheet to show the difference between what we currently have at Walter Fitzgerald campus and what the costs were for the last two years at the other school. I'd be happy to share that with you once we get it finished and updated. I can tell you, I just pulled it up in front of me just to give you the abandoned building. Last year, the electric on the abandoned building was approximately eight hundred dollars for the year. And the reason that being is that they do keep power on over there for the security issues and for some sump pumps in the boiler room area. If I scroll over to gas, the gas for that building last year was not existing because we're not heating anything, all right?
Yeah.
And water was non-existent. So electric seems to be the only thing that carries on that one.
Hey, guys, guys, instead of doing this piecemeal on this, might I suggest just do a comparative spreadsheet that compares what it costs right now, the one that's in your budget to run the Walter Fitzgerald campus versus what it's going to cost in next year's budget, should you run it at this location? And just let's see the differential. And I'm not talking about program. I'm talking about the differential in, in care and maintenance of the buildings.
Absolutely. That's what we're pulling together now for you.
And I would add that we shouldn't sell short the opportunity, something we talked about when we walked around on Friday, was the opportunity for programming in the summer. It's such a, I feel that there's great potential for schools, camps, whatever, to rent out the space if that's an option and, and that could be a generator of revenue, which I think should, we should account for perhaps. Just a thought.
True. Well, and I don't know, can I dovetail on what Mrs. Lefkowitz, select woman Lefkowitz said? I think, first of all, having toured the campus, I was very impressed. Secondly, having seen what was going on at the current Walter Fitzgerald campus, it's, it's certainly an upgrade. I'm largely supportive of this acquisition for all the reasons that have already been stated. And I want to thank everyone for setting up the tours and the like. I do think, and I, and I sent an email earlier today that laid out that I'd just like to understand the impact of these, this acquisition on the operating budget of the Board of Education in the town, just so that we know moving forward, what the differential we should expect in the budget is, is, and what the overall costs are. And just very simply lay them out next to each other and just give us the differential. And I would most certainly include in that differential the cost of, the cost of the funds to support this. And with that, I'd be, with that information, you know, I, I think I'd be ready to vote on this in a future meeting. So I, I just want to echo.
Sorry, my computer keeps muting me on its own. It's like my husband is controlling that. Sorry. Little comic relief. Anyway, we can get that information. Is there any, you can send any additional information if you just don't have any more questions right now. You can always email and we can get whatever you need for the fourteenth. But you know, I'm glad to hear that you both think it's a good acquisition. I, I really do think this is going to be really good. And Nancy, you bring up some good points about future uses. And I, you know, I think we get a really nice dialogue as a community, you know, about what we, what our vision might be there, obviously being sensitive to the neighborhood. But it is such a really great piece of property. And I want to thank Chairwoman Vitale for really calling me a lot about this and not giving up. Because I think at the end of the day, this is going to be a good acquisition for our town. And I'm excited about our students, our alternative high school students having a space that is, that is appropriate.
Even some of the supplies that were suggested that they might leave behind are such an asset. And it really, as I said, it's a heartbreak in one way, but a real opportunity in another. And you know, personally, I'm just so proud that this town has this high school option. It's, it's really, it's incredible.
I agree. I think it's going to be really good. So any questions that you have to send, we'll make sure we have everything you need before that meeting on the fourteenth. Christine, did you want to say something?
I do. I just wanted to, thank you, first of all, for select women for moving this forward and for your unending support of the Walter Fitzgerald program versus a Board of Education member. So you've presented now as our select woman. It is a program that is very dear to our hearts. And to see it move forward, this building in this location just gives me, it's so exciting. in this location just gives me, it's so exciting of the possibilities there for those students and potentially for students out of district. We, we've been touring over the last few days with town officials. We had a wish list of items and just the possibilities for what that space could be used for for the town is also very exciting. From being able to use that large town for town meetings to possibly use the school during the summer to support parks and rec. The fact that that building is already air-conditioned, it opens up a world of possibilities with town and that's, would be nice for our students just to have that. St. Emory's campus did not have that. So it really is moving ready and we're excited to move this forward. So thank you all for touring the building and for your continued commitment on this and especially Mr. Baldwin, really for just, really just taking the reins on this and moving forward so quickly. We couldn't have done it. Sorry for the echo.
Thank you, Christine.
You said it twice, you felt so strongly.
Well, thank you, everyone. And if there's no further questions, I'm going to move on to the next item. Thank you, Mike and Angeles and Mr. Papa George, coming on, Mancusi coming on to, and Christine coming on to speak about.
Madam, first select woman, first of all, thanks to everybody for their work on this. If we could get those scheduled as soon as they're prepared, just in case we have any questions, we can get those answered and piled up on before the voting meeting. That'd be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. Well, we have a week, so we'll get to them, we'll get them to you as soon as we definitely can. We'll work on it soon, I mean, quickly.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Flynn. We'll get those right away to you. Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings.
Take care now.
You too. Item, the next item on our agenda is item number 11 to here, Considerate on Tax Free Funds is Recommended by the Tax Elector, the amount of $17,855.62, Director of Motion to Approve.
Settled.
Second.
Any questions, any discussion?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion here. Item number 12 to here, Considerate on Any Other Business Which Will Properly Come Before This Meeting. I just want to briefly bring up, not that it's an item that our Board collectively votes on, but as you are aware, that I have been working actually since August on early retirement packages and we are in December. And I have shared the information with both of you and I did send both of you the latest packet of information that I will be presenting to the subcommittees on the RTM this evening. But I just wanted to bring it up and say that I'm really feeling positive about it as I have said to you both credibly and, I believe publicly. You know, when I came into this role a year ago, I didn't have really a sense of how much needed to be fixed until I was really sitting here and managing the town. And so working with my team over the last, you know, six months, really delving in and after the budget had passed and all that, delving in and getting through the COVID and trying to get our feet solid there, delving into what needs, what needs to be fixed and, you know, having the process, as I've said, since September, early September, with meeting with L and A Committee, committee leadership, with the L and A Committee, with the leadership on both sides of the aisle of the RTM, having the pension board reviewed, board of finance and many other meetings on this item. I think that we are in a place where we have a very solid product and I'm looking forward to presenting it to the RTM tonight to a point where we're actually saving money the first year and every year going forward in a very minimal impact on the long range of the pensions. So I hope that you, you know, had a chance to look at what I sent you, I believe on Friday it was, on what I'm presenting to the RTM this evening. If you have any questions or anything.
I guess my overall comment is, is, you know, good luck. I think that, you know, we have talked about you, appropriateness of you getting the tools that you need to be effective and while there may be differences of ideas of how to get there, I would just encourage you to make sure that whatever plan moves forward, that there is still a robust plan that includes what modernization looks like, what the customer service piece looks like, that this is just for me, one avenue that doesn't supersede or take the place of some of the other things you've talked about. So, you know, good luck. We don't have a vote on it, so I will leave it at that. But just to say that I think, you know, again, the modernization piece, like I fully support that and the customer service piece and just an overall attention to that because I think we've all been hurting from recent events and eager to, to put that chapter of our town's history behind us and move forward in a way that it doesn't happen again. So I just hope that plans moving forward include some of those things.
Well, thank you, Nancy. And I'm, I'm really excited about this. This is a crucial piece to the reorganization, a very important piece. And I'm looking forward to being given the tools to do the job that the residents of Fairfield elected me to do on their behalf. But I appreciate your support and your kind words. All right, I am going to move on to the next, to hearing and updates about COVID-19. Today Fairfield has 2,322 cases and 157 of our residents have lost their lives as a result of COVID. 159 of the 169 thousand Connecticut are in the red alert status, which means 15 or more cases per 100,000 residents each day. You may have heard recently that the CDC is revising your quarantine guidance, which many news outlets are reporting on. The state of Connecticut has not yet adopted these new procedures, so we are awaiting further direction from DPH and will provide more input to the community when we have it. We are working to expand testing in time, but it's a slow, complicated process. When I have more of an update, I will share that with residents. However, I just do want to say that our health department has met with Yale and Haven and they came down and toured some sites and we're hoping that that will be a successful partnership in allowing a testing center run by Yale right here in town. We are, the Fairfield Health Department continues to update our data page daily with stats for the town of Fairfield. And all I can continue to say is that I urge everyone to continue to follow protocols and for us to rely on each other and to make sure we're all doing our best to keep our most vulnerable safe. I put this in the newsletter, Health Department sends out repeated updates and PSA's. We are trying very hard to just drive home that we are not out of the woods yet and that everyone needs to continue to do their part and hunker down and let's get through this so that we can come out the other side healthy and ready to move forward. In the weekly newsletter, I sent out information and resources for residents, especially those who may need extra assistance this holiday season. There are so many programs available, whether it meal delivery, holiday gift assistance or financial assistance for individuals or businesses. And again, I just want to talk about the COVID Relief Fund, which was established to provide limited one-time assistance to our Fairfield residents who have been adversely impacted by COVID-19. And donations can still be made online to the fund and it is administered by Operation Hope on the town's behalf and we're still accepting applications. The fund has raised approximately $100,000 and as of 12/7, we have assisted 44 households, totaling $100,200. We are still accepting both applications and donations. And I will open it up. Is there any questions on COVID?
No, none for me right now.
I'm good.
And I just want an announcement of the Tree of Hope at Sherman Green is lit for Alice Angels this month. October 19th, Sawbit Town Suites owner and founder of Alice Angels, Al DeGuito, donated a tree to the town that was planted at Sherman Green. The Park and Recreation Commission voted at its July 2020 meeting to create a subcommittee to work with the community and perform outreach to organizations that help children and families in need in Fairfield. The plan was to offer different organizations the opportunity to light a tree for one month at a time to recognize their work. Alice Angels was founded 24 years ago by Al DeGuito, the owner of the beloved Fairfield business Sawbit Town Suites. After attending a charity event and hearing the stories of mothers who experienced severe financial hardship due to their children's life-threatening illnesses, Al committed to doing all that he could with as many friends and families and strangers to help children battling cancer, rare blood disease and severe financial need. Al runs fundraisers, food drives, toy drives and other charitable, community-oriented events to help families in Fairfield and throughout other parts of the country. Please stop by the Sherman Green in December to check out the tree and to learn more about Alice Angels. And if there are any other matters that anyone would like to bring up before we have a motion to adjourn?
None for me.
Or me.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Settled.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Thank you.
You too. Take care, everybody. Thank you.